Mr. Emmert?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Dr. Campbell? Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Here.
Mr. Rose? Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Present.
Mr. Sussage? You have six members present this evening.
Thank you so much. I see we have a presentation this evening. Mr. Fox, is that you?
It's been a long time coming, but here he is. Showing everybody out of character. Show the board.
I'm sorry.
This is the...
Could you show Mr. Emmert?
I was...
He's alone down there.
My head was out, that's okay. Very great.
Yeah, this, uh, this meeting process is done. And, uh, your set is a three globe certified award, which is one step better than we started out trying to get. And, uh, I think it's a wonderful thing because not only are our view as the board, view as a district, showing your support for state and community and a different way of looking at things. But, as Pleasant told me to remind you, it's also worth a million and a half dollars in additional reimbursement. Donna, since I say beginning, you can Donna Rayor Bay.
Do you want to do the...
Yes, please.
First, the real payoff would be the savings that the, that these, the items that made up this award provide the district for wanting to operate the building. That's where the real money is.
Get in that picture.
There you go, that's a piece of jewelry.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Mrs. Cook, I have one under personnel.
Yes.
I make it number, uh, item eighteen, and it will be the approval of salaries for non-bargaining unit employees as recommended by the administration, subject to a satisfactory evaluation.
Anything else? I need an intent to adopt the agenda as with that addition.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting for general purposes of May seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, the minutes of the regular meeting of May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twelve, and the minutes of the special meeting for general purposes of May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twelve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held June nineteenth, two thousand and twelve for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report and Mrs. O'Rourke?
My turn. Tonight I have a very brief report that will put a button on the highlights for the two thousand and eleven, twelve school year. Congratulations to the three hundred and ninety-five graduates of the Bethel Park High School class of two thousand and twelve, who graduated on June sixteenth. Here are a couple of the quick facts about this year's graduates. Sixty-five of them graduated with honors, sixty-two with high honors, and seventy-three of them graduated with highest honors, having maintained a four-point-oh QPA or higher. The class of two thousand and twelve had three National Merit Commended Students. The class of two thousand and twelve's average SAT score of fifteen thirty-three was sixty points higher than the state average and thirty-three points higher than the national average. This group of students earned four million dollars' worth of scholarships. Best wishes to all of our graduates. I'm sure we'll be hearing more in the future about this group's accomplishments. Four of our high school DECA students came home with awards at the two thousand and twelve DECA International Career Development Conference. Congratulations to Thomas Bailey, Dante Rebilo, Ethan Reprick, and Tara Nath, who earned awards of excellence for placing in the top twenty percent of their events. Thomas Bailey also earned a medallion award for earning a ninety-three percent on his event's written test, which put him among the top scorers. The students in the Bethel Park High School Interact Club recently made and donated twenty-four fleece blankets to Christ United Methodist Church for transport to the Home of Hope Orphanage in Adari, Zimbabwe. These blankets will be put to great use and be a continuing source of comfort for the children who reside there. Thank you to everyone who took the time to be a part of this project. A group of eighth grade students in Jason Turca's math classroom at Independence Middle School recently concluded a unit on isometrics and were so interested in the subject that they decided to create a bulletin board depicting an isometric downtown Pittsburgh skyline. Working on the project were Carolyn Kerr, Megan Carpenter, Ashley Slade, Jefferson Belback, Samuel Clark, Nando Pandolfo, and Colin Shakespeare. Lincoln Elementary students had a lot to celebrate at this year's Accelerated Reader Carnival, having accumulated over fourteen thousand AR points this school year. Students amassed AR reading points through the school, school year and were able to convert these points into games, food, and prizes at this year's carnival, which was held at the Lincoln Playground. A special congratulations goes to Emily Guffey and Anthony Will, who were the school's top readers this past school year. It is our hope that all of our students will continue the healthy habit of reading over the summer. William Penn fourth graders used their creativity and ingenuity to come up with some interesting items for this year's fourth grade invention convention. It was a difficult, it was difficult for the judging panel to determine the winners for the categories because all the inventions were terrific. Dylan Shield received the judges pick award for his Dog Bull White invention. And that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you. I think student government is off for the summer. How about PTA, PTO Council? They off for the summer as well, probably. And solicitors report?
I've provided you with a written report unless there's any questions. I am nothing further.
Thank you. And I don't believe we held any committee meetings. Um, I need public comments now on agenda items. Any public comments on agenda items only?
Uh, my name's Mark Rush. I live in eleven ninety-three Clifton Road. I was here last month for the meeting where Jennifer Kaminsky was given recognition by this board, very happily, uh, for her winning the STEP Award, which I'm very happy to nominate her for. Uh, my child is a student, a special needs student at Ben Franklin Elementary School. I found out about two hours ago that there was an item on the agenda to move Ms. Kaminsky from the elementary school to the high school. Without any notice of the parents, without any information at all, somewhere in this administration, someone has decided that they're going to take a special needs teacher. This isn't a regular teacher in terms of saying we have new kids every year. This is a teacher that works with children year after year after year in the elementary school. And somebody decided it's a great idea to take a teacher who's been working with kids for two or three years, without any notification, in the middle of the summer, and all of a sudden say, "You know what? Your kid's not going to have his teacher anymore." I wanted to come to the meeting, express to you my concern about it. I wanted you to make sure that you saw my face, you knew who I am, because between now and the start of the school year, you're going to see a lot more of me and you're going to hear a lot more of my name. I find this completely unacceptable that we just take a teacher in a, in a special circumstance such as this, dealing with the children that she deals with, and we just make a decision, we're just going to yank her out, and the kids show up in the fall, and they say, "Oh, you know, where's our special teacher, who we see every day?" I, I'm appalled at that. And like I said, you will hear from me more. I just wanted to make sure that you knew who I was. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm not sure that you have all the correct information. It is a personnel issue, so I'm not sure what I can share with you about that, but...
Well, it was on the agenda, so I just wanted to make a comment. I wasn't expecting it. But I appreciate it.
I, I just would like to let you know that she, as a teacher, applied for the job. It, it, if that clarifies, uh, a personnel move of that kind in the district.
I didn't know you wanted to discuss that issue. But... Hooked a meeting, I just wanted to make a comment.
Okay. I, I just, it sounded to me like you didn't understand the circumstances of how that personnel, uh, move would have taken place. Any other comments on, um, agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are four items this evening under curriculum. Would anyone like anything bold? Hearing none, I would like to move August thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, the in-service presenter, Coratio Sanchez. Number two, the social studies curriculum purchase for grades one through twelve. Number three, professional development. And number four, the high school music department field trips for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through four under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Spicuzza. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule?
There are eighteen items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out? Uh, if not, uh, I move that we approve, um, item one, which is approval of substitutes. Item two, approval of extra duty responsibility program. Item three, attainment of status of professional employees. Four, acceptance of resignation. Five, approval of a two thousand and twelve extended school year program. Six, approval of an extended school year staffing. Seven, approval of staffing changes. Eight, change of assignments. And nine, approval of summer help for the custodial maintenance staff. Eleven, approval of the stage crew members for two thousand and twelve, thirteen. Twelve, approval to extend unpaid leave of absence. Thirteen, the approval to extend temporary assignment for long-term substitute. Fourteen, approval of leaves of absence. Fifteen, approval of board treasurer. Sixteen, involuntary transfer. Seventeen, approval of summer help in high school security. And eighteen, approval of salaries for non-bargaining unit employees.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through eighteen under personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Emmert. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Facilities and Services Committee, Mr. Spicuzza. Will you take that this evening, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Uh, there are three items under facility, facilities and services tonight. Would anyone like any of them held out separate? If not, I will move the following three items. Item number one, the elevator, elevator maintenance service agreement. Uh, item number two, sidewalk repairs at the bus garage. And item number three, approval of change orders for the high school project. Uh, change order GC zero four one to Mascara Corporation in the amount of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. Uh, cost to, uh, to field install door lock cylinders in the amount of seven thousand three seventy-four twenty-eight. Cost resulting from revised storm line profiles in the amount of ten thousand three eighty-seven thirty-one. Cost for miscellaneous extra work done on time and material in the amount of one thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ten cents. Cost for permanent rail brackets, the natatorium railing, in the amount of two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and forty-three cents. Cost for door hardware changes requested by district in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Cost to furnish and install cover plates on the elevator slump pump pits in the amount of one thousand two hundred and ninety-nine dollars and forty-seven cents. Cost to replace ceiling tile in the cafeteria and clean the kitchen in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-five cents. Cost to install replacement Astroglows and, uh, additional thresholds in the amount of two thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-four cents. And change order number EL zero twenty-two. Cost for additional community day outlets on the parking lot poles and outlets on the fence of the tennis courts, the cluster electric, in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-one dollars.
Second. Items one through three under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Emmert, will you take that for me this evening, please?
Yes, I'll take that, Susan. We have twenty-one items under the Finance Committee. And before I, uh, go into it, I wanted to announce that under number twenty-one, the selection of the voting delegate for the PSBA Legislative Policy Council Meeting, to fill in the blank, will be the board recommends to appoint Connie Rule, and that will be filling into that position. Out of those twenty-one items, would anyone want any help, any one of these held out? Hearing none, I move items one through twenty-one. Number one is June two thousand and twelve salaries and bills. Number two, May two thousand and twelve financial report. Number three, the bill list for July two thousand and twelve. Number four, post-June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve budget transfers. Number five, establishment of millage rates. Number six, two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen general fund budget. Number seven, Homestead and Farmstead exclusion resolution. Number eight, approval of depositories. Number nine, naming of newspaper for advertising. Number ten, renewal of insurance policies. Number eleven, educational service agreement, IAIU. Number twelve, approval of student services contracts. Number thirteen, approval of Harris Computer Systems contract. Number fourteen, approval of Steel Center Area Vocational Technical School operating, operating budget. Number fifteen, approval of Steel Center Area Vocational Technical School administrative budget. Number sixteen, approval of the purchase of information technology equipment. Number seventeen, approval of the purchase of information technology software. Number eighteen, Bethel Park Online Academy curriculum. Number nineteen, awarding of the bus tire bid. Number twenty, awarding of the electrical service upgrade bill at Independence Middle School. And last, as already stated, number twenty-one, the selection of the voting delegate for the PSBA Legislative Policy Council Meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Items one through twenty-one under Finance Committee have been moved by Mr. Emmert and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry six to zero. Policy Committee and Mr. Spicuzza?
Thank you again, Mrs. Cook. Seeing three items on the, uh, agenda for Policy Committee, would anyone like any of them held out separate?
Just, just, uh, number two, under the discussion of the renewable policy. Actually, I'm sorry, number three, in the first policy, since it's the first of three readings, I'd just like to throw out a general discussion when we get to that one. Just a general discussion comment.
So you want me to hold that out separately or you just...
Please. Okay.
That doesn't need a motion. It's just the first reading.
Oh, it's first reading.
So I move the following, uh, two items. Approval of, item number one, approval of policy final reading of the curriculum advertising on school property and website and internet acceptable use. And item number two, renewal of policy of student bullying and harassment.
Second.
Thank you. Item, items one and two under Policy Committee have been moved by Mr. Spicuzza and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any discussion on these two? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry six to zero. And you just announced number three?
And I'd like to announce the first reading of, um, policy number one, two, three, point one, concussion management.
Uh, and I just had a general comment on that. Under our, um, under the section where it says the repercussions for the, uh, the coaches on the concussion management, I was just wondering if our three-strikes, uh, policy on here may be a little too lenient, then, uh, I'm just thinking that if a coach would violate that policy and send a player or a student player in more than one time, if that should be enough right there, and we give them, we would give them three. And, uh, just wanted to throw that out for some consideration, because as I read it, I think that once would be enough in a, in a situation like that with everything that is happening now and all the knowledge that we have out there for our policy concussion management.
Is this a standard, um...
David, I, we'll take, uh, we'll take our concern and review it with the, uh, solicitor. And then, um, if we, uh, if they would agree that that's okay, we'll, we would make that, we would make a change and maybe make that a little bit more stringent than it is.
Yeah, that, that's fine. I would like to hear what ours, what they have to say about that.
All right. We'll have them review it and then give a small report on that during the month of July.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd just like to make a comment also. I, I'm in agreement with Mr. Emmert on that. I had, uh, had some concern about that myself and didn't quite think that, I think that was way too lenient on our part.
And again, that's why we have three readings, so that we can discuss and we can have, uh, bring back, uh, some changes and for the second reading. Well, we are to public comments on anything that anyone would like to speak to the board about tonight.
I'm Steve Husser, fifty-six-hundred Library Road. Um, I just, it's my understanding, I, I was, I've been trying to keep up on this. I was away for the last meeting. I, I was out of town for work. But it's my understanding that, um, that the budget that was passed tonight, uh, did not include any, had, had no program, programmatic cuts, um, at all. And, and I just wanted to thank the board for, for making that happen. I, I know it's, um, uh, you know, in these economic times with cuts from the state, with increased retirement reimbursements, there's a lot of districts that are, um, making cuts to music or art or marketing or tech ed, uh, foreign language. Um, and, and I just want to thank the board for finding a way to make it possible to not have any cuts to those programs. Those programs are, uh, vital to the, uh, they, they, they bring so many kids alive in those classrooms and, um, it helps kids, helps kids find their way academically and socially. It, it opens up another part of the brain. It, it's, um, is, develops skills in, in so many different careers and gives, opens kids up, uh, to so many other options. And I just think it's, it's so vital. And I thank the board for, um, for, for making that a priority. And I ask that the board continue to make that a priority. Um, I, I would, I would still like to see third-grade strings come back, but, um, but, but I did just really want to thank the board for, for in these times, uh, keeping those cuts. And, and just in general, um, I, I wanted to thank the board. This, I know you all, um, not just, in addition to these meetings, you're, you're working tirelessly behind the scenes, um, you know, studying these policies and procedures and curriculum and all this stuff. And I, and I, there's, I know how much, there's just so much time behind the scenes that you're working on. You have to face criticism a lot for, for, uh, for what you do and the decisions you make, uh, you know, including from myself at times. Uh, and I, I just am very appreciative of the time. I mean, you don't get paid a cent to do any of that. So, um, I just wanted to thank all of you for, for the time and the efforts that you've put in, uh, this past school year. And, um, to just thank you for your service to, to our community and our students.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Cook? Can you make a comment?
Sure.
Much of the praise that you gave to the board, I think, belongs to Mr. Corazzi, who worked very hard on the budget. I think you made a total of, what, twelve revisions on it? So, a lot of that goes to him.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to board comments. And would you like to start out with your add-on to your comments there, Mr. Means?
Yes, ma'am. Um, but all I'd like to say is, uh, attending the graduation was a real pleasure, and I thought it was a beautiful event. And it was really a, a pleasure to be able to participate in it. And congratulations to all the graduates and hope they do well in their new endeavors.
And we actually got him in a gown this year.
Yes.
Mr. Spicuzza?
Well, I'm just thankful that we made it through the year. That was a, a great accomplishment. And, uh, I, I appreciate all the work of our staff and our administration and our teachers to make this another good, successful year. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Buckley?
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I would just like to add to what the gentleman have already said and that, uh, I agree with their comments and, uh, wishing everybody a few weeks off before we get back into the group. Thank you.
Sounds good. Mrs. Rule?
Um, other than Steel Center, we, we had to cut three courses. We mentioned that at our committee meeting. But those were courses that had small attendance. So we are working within that school to begin to bring, um, other courses in that will be, um, more relevant to the work, you know, of the area right now. So there'll be a lot more changes we'll be talking about. And the other thing is, I've had my first orientation to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit for our meeting, so that you'll probably be hearing a little bit more about that as we go forward in September.
Thank you for taking on that role for us, as well as the PSBA delegate. And Mr. Emmert?
Nothing further as to what else has been said. Have a nice summer, everybody, and we'll see you shortly.
And I, I just want to thank everyone. I, I can start with my board, because these folks, as Steve said, put in countless, countless hours beyond just the meetings that we attend. I, I, you are wonderful for all that you do for, uh, the children and community of Bethel Park. Likewise, our administration, our staff, our teachers. And we just, we have great parents and kids in this district. So it's wonderful to work for and with them as well. And everyone have a wonderful, safe, happy summer. Thank you. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.